Ang susunod na programa ay Rated PG. Patnubay at Gabay ng Magulang ay kailangan sa mga batang manonood.
Scripture reading for today's taking from the basketball, according to Luke 17, verse 1 to 6. He said to these disciples, causes of falling are sure to come, but alas for the one through whom they afford. It would be better for such a person to be thrown into the sea with a millstone around the neck than to be downed full of a single one of these little ones. Keep watch on yourselves if your brother does something wrong. Rebook him and if he is sorry, forgive him. And if he wrongs you seven times a day, seven times come back to you and say, "I'm sorry," you must forgive him. The apostles said to the Lord, "Increase our faith." The Lord replied, "If you had faith like a mustard seed, you could say to this mulberry tree, 'Be affrooted and planted in the sea,' and it would obey you." Let us pray. Lord, you have entrusted us as stewards of your creation. Please guide our hearts as we make our decisions. We seek you first in all we do together. We give you our business for the day, our constituents, and our workforce. May we be always mindful of your service. We confess that we are nothing without you, and our trust is in you completely. Amen.
He thus once more, you are loyal to the country by singing the national anthem.
The secretary for the Sanggorean is in union to pull the roll.
Good afternoon, everybody. Our honorable City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer Attorney George T. Almonte present, the Honorable Soldier D. Gamalinda present, Honorable Jesse S. Ambuang present, the Honorable Joel B. Aklaud present, the Honorable Donna R. Yu present, the Honorable Isaiah S. Claros Jr. present, Honorable Vincent J. Guantero present, the Honorable Arthur Q. Inanoria on leave, Honorable Noel B. Undag Senior present, the Honorable Eileen in Taladua on leave, the Honorable Joseph L. McGinnay present, Honorable Alfred Y. Bolino Jr. present, Honorable Heinrich Von Gonzaga present, and the Honorable Jolly T. Gomelon present. Mr. Presiding Officer, majority is in attendance.
With majority of the members of the Sanggorean being in attendance, coral is hereby declared. The Honorable Majority Leader is requested to acknowledge our guests and visitors.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding. Please help me welcome our guest for today's session, May 30, 2022. Our friends from media, Mr. Boy Tercero from DXNA. Welcome, Mr. Edel Paschala and Rolex Antasoda, both our cameramen. Mr. Joe Matapundag, our friend from the media. And Miss, our bronze medalist from the 31st Sea Games in Hanoi, Vietnam, Mr. Ira Hope Rivera. Welcome to our session. Good afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Majority Leader. This time, we have guests who shall be given... people's name. It is informed that our guest today is Emil Shira Hope Rivera, a resident of Pines, the city, who recently tagged the Bronze Medal in the 31st Southeast Asian Games in Hanoi, Vietnam. Ladies and gentlemen of the Sanggorean, please help me welcome Miss Shira Hope Rivera.
Good afternoon for the evening lahat. I'm Shira Hope Rivera from Pines, Orketas City. Pakauit ko lang last Tuesday para mag-dress kasi galing lang kami ng SEA Games sa Vietnam. Kikabayan ko. Kina-tenen po sir. Mas kulba o unis? Dula? Ay, scholar ko sa Ateneo, the Manila University. Naghigh school ko sa De La Sal Santiago Zubel sa Ayala Alabang Village. So, I'm very grateful na invite ko during na session. So, mag-share lang ko mga background na ko, ay og experience during sa akong game. Kaya dapat dilig ko mudayon og SEA Games. Dapat diligin ko mudayon og SEA Games. One week before me mularga, na-injured ko and I was diagnosed ACL tear, MCL tear, and meniscus tear. So, very natwist kaya akong suhod. And one, before me mularga, nagtawag ko ang coach na coach, dilig na kumudayon kaya basa mag-worst ang ako ang injury. Tas nung sugot sila, nung okay sila. And then pagkagabi eh, kaya pagka-mu-mularga, pagkagabi eh, nanawag sila na Shai, the team need you kaya sa doubles. Ano ko na, I can play doubles, kaya hon ako, pero dilig ko maka-promise o maka-give o hundred percent. Nga nagduaduhan ako sila. Tapos mga pila kaminit, nag-decide ko na panindigan ako kong desisyon na mo adtoh Hanoi, Vietnam, mo dula and erase ang flag sa Philippines. Then happy kind taloyan sa gino, walay naitabo nga na-worst akong suhod, but nakakuha pag hapon ko og medal. So, very thankful kaayaw ko kaya na-recognize ko diri sa Orketas. And first time na ko nga gidala ang Orketas for many years. Sa unang ang good nga, nadala ko og namraa. Wala ko dipili, sumoto na disappoint ko. So, nag-transfer ko sa Davos. And then pag-transfer na ko sa Davos, dito na nagkasunod-sunod ang mga nagkuha ako ah, anta nakwa ko sa Manila. Since 15 years old ko, nagdudula, nagigog international tournament, dilig ko nagdudula og locals. Pero lead ko sa school mo dula og palarong pambansa. For six years, nakakuha ko og gold sa akong palaro, gold and support. Sa international, puna ko na tournament last, last last year sa New Zealand, na ang Philippines, ang rounds sa Philippines is layo kaayo, but after na muning dula og Fed Cup, nahimo-oh, nahimo-oh top five ang Philippines kaya nag runner-up me against New Zealand. So, grabe ang blessing and yep, pasalamat ko sa tibuos mga taga Orketas kaya ilang support sa ako ah during SEA Games. Kaya grabe good ilang mga chats and all, di lang ko karreplay, but naka-motivate sa ako ah. And salamat, kaayos sa tanan. Salamat.
Nahat salamat. Ay, saglakaw. Kining, oh na ay gustong magpakisayod og dugang. Atong nagagbigayon, mga mga gustong pangayuo ng mga information. Any gentleman or lady, nga gustong mo historya? Honorable Vincent Guantero?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, thank you, Mr. Presiding. Shai, once again, congratulations, no? You indeed bring crowds sa Philippines and most especially sa city of Orketas and barangay Pines. Now, it is, ah, nahuman namang yun ang Southeast Asian Games, Madondo, in Hanoi, Vietnam?
Yes.
Ah, what, um, may naka-inline ang mga tournaments sa imuha in the near future, Road to Asian Games bata or hopefully to Olympics?
Ah, good afternoon, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Dapat this coming September, Asian Games. Pero nag-cancel ang Asian Games kaya dagan kayo COVID sa China, kaya sila man ang host karoon. So, ang Philippine Colombian Association, big tournament sa Philippines, na-open, mo ako ang ipangandaman, tapos next year SEA Games sa Cambodia.
Mr. Presiding, if you can speak, Mr. Presiding. Good afternoon once again, congratulations, Shai. As the chairman of the Committee on Youth and Sports, we are very honored to have Miss Shira this morning. Actually, and it's afternoon, actually last Friday, we contacted her, somebody contacted me na she's here in Orketas. So, even though the resolution is not yet passed on final reading, we invited her today because she will be going back to Manila tomorrow for a codice call in Malacanyang. So, daw kaya nagpasalamat ni Miss Shira kaya iya sige na kita gagapanahon karong adlawa. Maraglas din niya di karoon sa Orketas. Walang gusuan na resuscite nga mo kuwan nga uma-accept sa invitation. So, I believe nga, kani nga, kani nga gibuhat ni Miss Shira nga, naghatah of honor or glory sa tong city. Makaincourage siya sa tuwa na ano, to continue, makaincourage siya tuwa to continue to support the sports development program sa tong city, sino kaya promising kaya nga tuwang mga batanon. Dahang kaya nagbatanon nga, very active the sports. Since the whole pandemic, kani gamotid sila nga makadula yapon because of their eagerness to play. And it shows nga, ni Miss Shira Rivera, ah, yang yang achievement, nagpakita ka na, daw kayo nga, promise sa tuwa nga, there is a brighter future para sa tuwang mga athletes. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Gonzaga. Na apay gustong magpakisayod?
Mr. Presiding.
Honorable Isaiah Claros Jr. is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding. First of all, congratulations, Shira, for your, for the honor you've given to this city. And pasalamat pagme kaya imog 'yung pinala ang Orketas. With the stage, say mo ang status karoon sa sports, direktman ta maka-ingon, masalamong dula ta. You go to the process, no? And we have a lot, a lot of talented young series Orketas. Ang kulang lang nila is exposure. So siguro, mas maayaw og ma-share mo, the window, asa sila yun maka-gain of exposure. Just like you, I know you've been bred outside of Orketas, no? Na enhance ang mo ang skills. And really, you will remain in Orketas, diligin ka mo atin so, no? Pero, paayaw ko maka-baloming or maka, how our young na ay talent dery, especially feeling atong namraa. Myself is a product of namraa way back when I was a little young. Young pagyapo ko karoon in mind. Pero, wala exposure, no? Wala exposure. So, sa Manila, dagan kayo exposure. So, um sa may buhaton, no? Kaya namatong chairman sa sports na maka- penetrate sa ang atong mga senior dery, makuha sa mga university dito, no? Example, 'yung tryout, no? Kaya, wala may mapatryout dery. So, ang Taga Orketas maghulat rapon. So, there must be something na buhaton nila. Um sao nila maka-abay, maka-tryout, maka-balo sila. Ano 'yung mga schools, especially nga na akas Ateneo, no? So, ano UAP, diba? UAP mangka and CAA. Ima mga na 'yung mga pinakapopetitive nga mga sports college organization sa Manila. So, siguro maka-share ka, um sao na tu, ang ato ang mga young talented dery, maka-explore ano 'yung opportunity dito. Kaya if they will remain here, say mong gi-ingon, ah, ingon ka, no? Gali ka na pilit, no? Kaya siguro wala talan sayon yun sa pagpilit, no? Pero, um sa mga dito, mas madako ang opportunity nila. So, um sa may inong ika-share, ika-hatag sa ilaang, nga, muda ko ang ilaang, nga liberate, nga, makakuha sa opportunity, matrain sila, kaya of course, kung wala, kanakaagi ane mga eskulahan na, di maninong ni makapo, no? Ang training nga, inong nadawat ang mga schools ni ini, diligin mo ni ma, diligin wala ni dery. So, kinahanglan kila ang ato ang taga dery, makakuha sila og asa sila pa-ingon, nga maka-train sila. So, pwede ba ni mo na mai-share?
Thank you, sir. Ah, ako na, kuhangin ko sa palarong pambansa, like dito sa, first palaro na ko is Pangasinan, ah, nakatsamba, nakakuha ko gold nun ang dagan ang, inuha na ko and pinaka-unak po, pinaka-importante mong good kaayos sa isa pa athlete kaya ang discipline of determination nila nga, mo go good sila na ang sports. Kaya if mukuha ang mga Taga Manila nga, umakuha sila players diri sa province and then ang mga kabataan karoon kaya mag-yosi na, mag-inom. So, sayang lang diha ko na ang ilaha na makuha, magkuha sila player, diriligikan sa province, pagabot sa Manila. Morag, gina-take for granted, bitaw nila ang ilahang opportunity. So, inig, ang dapat good nga, makakuha ang mga, mga coaches and ano, sa taga-province, kaya ng, taagid dapat disiplina sa sarili, tapos determinado kaayaw ang bata nga, mo, mo, mo take of risk nga, mo adtoh Manila, mo join og aning tournament, para ma-expose po sila, makamit sila og ibang players na, um nga, mamotivate sila na to do more, to train hard, na para makamit ilahang pangarap kaya ang sports isa po siya sa key na makahuman kagskwela kaya makatabang po siya sa scholarship. Like me, wala ko'y gibayaran since elementary, zero balance good always kaya nagahatag po ko, honor sa school and makita po sa, sa akong coaches na, na anang kaya na ko na, na determinado kaya ko, pagma-ingon ko saong coaching, coach, ako'y mudula na. Dilig bitaw sila makulbaan kaya ako na ginismo ang nagkuhan, nag-ingon. Sa una, mo, mo, gina-pildiko, zero-zero akong score, ano, pero akong di promise akong self na next ng dula niya, ako na po'y mang-zero. So, akong gina-do, after school, atong tennis court, and then mag-training ko, footwork, jogging, and all then. Times two akong gina-do para, para makamit na ko akong goal na, mapildi ang ano. Morag, gina, siya sir, mukuha og, actually maka-help po ko sa mga, sa mga young athletes nga, ganahan map, same na ko, maka-help ko og, og kuhan nila sa school. Kaya kailan naman ko sa halos mga coaches dito sa, sa Manila, good, kaya 10 years na po ko nagpo dito. So, help ko.
Why, magotana?
Mr. Presiding, I would like to add. I asked that question because we have a ranking, tennis, bata pa no? Sinas?
Sinas, I think you know Nas, Taga Sinez. So, kuhan siya, um tanaw na to is, is competing, manggood kaayos siya. Pero, tanaw na ko, wala siya yung opportunity to go out. No, maybe you can help him, kaya ubodaghan mo, manakot takot manggood eh. No, kaya ubodaghan mo, morag, ah, listen, listen kaayos, padaghan mo na Taga Orketas, mas mainang, I think Sinas is one of our young athletes nga, nagdala og honor yapon sa tuwa dery, kaya ranking man is siya sa, I think, mga palawan-palawan, no? Mga kuhan siya. So, unang akulat, magotana na, good, kaya na atay mga, mga gagmay pang enthusiast kaya aling atong madforce nga, naagyo'y mga ranking sa mga associations. So, ulang lang yun siguro sila, um exposure, no? With your help, maybe, la, maka-keep in touch sila sa, or ang ato ang chairman sa sport, maka-keep in touch emuha. Para kini mga bata ang nga na ay, naku kaayong chances, no? Na ay, ang ingon, manggood ka, oh, kaya ako ay which namraa. Ah, mapilit na mo gamay na maabot ka na mga stage ya, no? Dilig nag-i-ingon, opodula lang ka, kaya na may nag-anginon, ah, dula ta, pero mo inom, morag, mo kadayon, sayo salamat, inonggi-ingon, no? When a stage namraa maabot nimo, mapilit na yun ka, no? So, morag, gamay lang yung pipiyunan kayo, ano, no? So, unang na atay daghan ngayon, ano, nawalan yung yung opportunity. But with you, siguro mas maayaw ang ato ang chairman sa committee, maka-keep in touch emuha para at least kung na ay mga empresado or sa hayang manggood mo, bumugat, sugig ka, kaya matok ka dito para you try out, no? Para maka-try out yun ka, no? Kaya, morag, maginay puhunan sa akong panaw, no? Ah, at least, ah, makakuha og ga-kontakt emuha ang ato ang chairman sa committee para at least, ah, makatabang po ta sa tuwang mga Taga Orketas. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Presiding.
Na apay gustong mo makihistory? Ah, wala na? Oh, wala na? Ang presiding po'y magotana. If Shira Hope Rivera, diyan magkana tao?
Sa Kadungilan Bukinon.
Bukinon? Ah, I see. So, kailan din sumangangin dery?
Hindi, kaila kaya, bata ko po sa.
Losita Rivera, kaila ka? Sa payo?
Ba siga akong lula.
Si Mr. Godral Rivera.
Ako lulo, akong lulo.
Ay, mo ang gold?
Akong lulo.
Ah, okay. Well, anyway, kining, in your case, naka-indul ka sa sports, mahimo ka, ah, player, um sa event, um sa toy event dito?
Um, doubles, sir, doubles.
Doubles, huh?
Ay, sorry, sport?
Long tennis?
Long tennis.
Ah, long tennis. Ah, very good, nag-aapo ta kaya na tennis champion ba po ko? Na national tennis champion sa naism Klumbos in 1983. Double champion, dun ya, na single champion po. Kining, ah, so ma-ingon na tong pugan nga, na-indul ka sa tennis, suhod kaya gikuha ka sa, as its tennis isala.
Yes, sir.
So, ma-ingon na tong nga, you have played your way, okay? Exacto ba?
Exacto.
Okay. Ang ehm, kinabuhay is an inspiration to the young people og, exacto tong, o sabi ko, no? So, tinamo, nga, one of the avenues arunay abot ka na lugar, pag-aboy sa sports sa mga eskulahan, niabot ka regional, naabot ka og palarong pambansa, og dito ka na ilhan, kaya during this events, naamay mga talent scouts, na'y mga kutis, kaya magpangita, o kaysa yun ay potential na i-develop into a top-ranking athlete. So, ining higuna, congratulation, Miss Rivera, kining, ah, ni amay ah, plaque of appreciation di andam, ato tinggalinig iba basa sa tong sipetari, o gonsay na butangdini, ah, korte si Honorable Von Gonzaga.
Republic of the Philippines, Sanggorean Panglunsod, Orketas City, plaque of appreciation is hereby awarded to Shira Hope Rivera in recognition to her valuable effort and dedication to bag the bronze medal in the women's tennis doubles during the 2022 31st Sea Games in Hanoi, Vietnam. during the twenty-twenty-two thirty-first Sea Games in Hanoi, Vietnam. Thus giving glory and honor to the city of good life. Given the thirty-day of May twenty-twenty-two at the Sanggoniang Pandunsud Station Hall, Oroqueta City, Nissamis Occidental. Signed, Attorney George P. Almonte, City Vice Mayor.
Ah, Honorable Gonzaga is requested to please stand and then let us give the plaque of appreciation to Miss Rivera. Ah, murapunig, DB, ah, television DB, has a, ah, Ah, majority of leader, leader G in the outdoor business league.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding. The minutes, the regular session dated May twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two, signed by all members except on leave as well as the Honorable Island M. Taladua. We on leave, ah, today. And the journal number twenty-four dated May twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two, signed by all members except on leave as well as, except the Honorable Island M. Taladua is on leave today. Majority of sign the, both the minutes, the regular session as well as the journal number twenty-four, dated, all dated May twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two, and to move for its adoption.
Is there any comment, remarks, objection to the motion for the adoption? Approval of the journal, of journal number twenty-four and the minutes of May twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two regular session. Chair Hilsnan, the motion is approved.
Committee reports. A, committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-four, may call in the gentleman from San Vicente Bajo.
The gentleman from San Vicente Bajo, the Honorable Noel B. Undang Senior is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding, majority of leader. Ah, committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-four, with the subject, ah, referred to the committee for review and considerations are the following. Letter A is, ah, eleven applications for renewal in tax and two applications for this change of unit. Letter B is one application for the issuance of provisional intap. Letter C is one application for the renewal of interpermits and letter D, cancellation of two, ay, expired intaps. Sir Presiding, upon the view of the committee, it shows that this applicant for the renewal and change of unit, issuance provisional intaps and the renewal of interpermits submitted all the requirements necessary for the attachment or their applications. Therefore, they are qualified to reach a threshold higher within the specified right brought in the city. Therefore, it is recommended that their applications be approved. And regards the cancellation of expired intaps, ah, record shows that there is, there are two franchise holders who failed to renew their franchise until one month's period had ended. So, the committee files to declare that pick up. But still, they are given three working days to visit the Sanggoniang Pandunsud office for the intention to get back the said franchise. And prior to those, it is presumed that they are no longer interested, thus it will be given to qualified applicants. Sir Presiding, in behalf of the committee, I recommend for the adoption and approval of committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-four and the attached proposed city resolution number one-one-four dash two-zero dash two, ah, two-zero-two-two. And a resolution approving applications for renewal, change of unit and issuance provisional franchise or authorized request of peridos permit, application for renewal of interpermits and cancellation of expired intaps, as first stated in committee report number two-two dash zero-five, dash zero-nine-four, the committee on transportation, passing it on second and final reading.
Is there any comment, remarks on the recommendation of the committee chair, committee on transportation regarding its committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-four, including the attached proposed city resolution number one-one-four dash twenty-twenty-two, that it be passed on second and final reading? The Chair Hilsnan, majority of leader, please proceed accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding, on the recommendation of the committee chair, committee on transportation, pertaining to the application or renewal of, or change unit of MTOP, provincial MTOPs, renewal of interpermit and expired, cancellation of expired MTOPs. With no objection, I so move for the adoption of committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-four and to pass on second and final reading the attached proposed city resolution number one-one-four dash two-zero-two-two.
Thank you, majority of leader. There is a motion that committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-four be adopted and that the accompanying resolution thereto number one-one-four dash twenty-twenty-two be passed on second and the final reading. Is there any objection, comment? Chair Hilsnan, the motion is approved.
B, committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-five, may call in the gentleman from Barangay Talik.
The gentleman from Barangay Talik, the Honorable Jisi is, Ambuang is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding, majority of leader. Ah, committee report number two-two dash zero-five zero-nine-five, regarding the request of the Honorable City Mayor Lemuel Merrick M. Acosta for a resolution authorizing him for inter, inter memorandum of agreement between the LGO of ITA and the Philippine Force Authority for the transfer, management permission and maintenance of the ports of President Manuel Elchezon and subvention through our vote of this city. Mr. Presiding, the service, the committee here is adopted on the survey team, with the support of the Department of Defense and the representative from the Philippine Force Authority. Ah, during the delegation, Mr. Presiding, the committee is unanimous in its support for intent of the City Mayor to renew the MOA. Recognizing the advantages of the State of ITA would benefit from the state agreement. Provided, the new MOA to be drafted with the PPE would include the provision seeking the reduction of fifty percent or should be general remittance of the City Government to the PPE to ten percent favoring the City Government. On that note, please, Mr. Presiding, in behalf of the committee, I recommend for the adoption and acceptance of the committee report number twenty-two dash oh-five dash oh-nine-five, as well as the proposed city resolution number one-one-five dash two-zero-two-two for second and final reading. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there any comment, remarks on the recommendation of the committee chair, committee on economic enterprise pertaining to each committee report, pertaining to eh, to the adoption of each committee report number two-two dash zero-six dash zero-nine-five? And the attached proposed city resolution thereto number one-one-five dash twenty-twenty-two, that it be passed on second and the final reading? The Chair Hilsnan, the motion, ah, majority of leader, please proceed accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding, on the recommendation of the committee chair, committee on city economic enterprise pertaining to the memorandum of agreement by and between the City Government of Oroqueta and Philippine Force Authority for the transfer of management, operation, development and maintenance of the ports of President Manuel Elchezon and San Vicente Bajo from the PPA to the City Government of Oroqueta with no objection. I so move for the adoption of committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-five and to pass on second and final reading the attached proposed city resolution number one-one-five dash two-zero-two-two.
The motion at hand is the committee report number two-two zero-five dash zero-nine-five be adapted and that the attached proposed city resolution thereto number one-one-five dash twenty-twenty-two be passed on second and the final reading? Is there any objection, comment? Chair Hilsnan, the motion is approved.
C, committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-six. I call in the lead committee chair, the gentleman from San Vicente Bajo.
The gentleman from San Vicente Bajo is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding. Ah, joint committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-six. Ah, serving the committee on labor employment and committee on education and culture, the following subject matter. The first endorsement dated twenty-eight September twenty-twenty-one from the Honorable City Mayor Lemuel Merrick M. Acosta, respectfully forwarding to his august body, the letter dated September twenty-seven twenty-twenty-one from Mr. Mark Anthony Diartigas, supervising labor and employment officer, humbly commending to pass an ordinance instituting the conduct of career coaching to junior high school, pre-employment coaching to senior high school and labor education to graduating college and technical vocational student in the city of Oroqueta. So, the joint committee hearing was conducted on May twenty-two twenty-two with the entire Republic result, thus hereby inconcessions, though respectfully recommend, passing on first reading the proposed ordinance, city ordinance number zero-one-one dash twenty-twenty-two. Considering that it is on first reading, ah, may request the secretary to read the title of this ordinance. Thank you.
The secretary to the Sanggoniang is directed to read the title of the proposed city ordinance.
Proposed city ordinance number zero-one-one dash twenty-twenty-two entitled, An Ordinance Instituting the Conduct of Career Coaching to Junior High School Pre-Employment Coaching to Senior High School and Labor Education to Graduating College and Technical Vocational Students in the city of Oroqueta, appropriating funds therefore and for such other purposes, on first reading.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. So, ah, what say you, committee chair, Noel B. Undang Senior?
Good afternoon. Sir, there is a, ah, it is on first reading. I recommend to refer back to the committee, ah, joint committee, committee on labor employment and committee on education and culture.
Ah, does the Honorable Majority of Leader agree with the refer?
Yes, Mr. Presiding.
So, um, proposed ordinance number zero, number zero-one-one dash twenty-twenty-two is referred to the committee on labor and the employment.
The committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-seven. May I call in the, the vice chair, the gentle lady from Barangay Mobut?
The gentle lady from Mobut is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer and George Gordon. Committee report number twenty-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-seven of the committee on social services, pertaining to the letter dated twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth of March twenty-twenty-two from the Honorable City Mayor Lemuel Merrick M. Acosta, requesting this august body to pass a resolution authorizing him to sign the MOA for the implementation of Philsees Birth Registration Assistance Project, or PBRAC, in Oroqueta City. One of the PSA or the Philippine Statistics Authority's major programs is the implementation of Philsees Birth Registration Assistance Project to assure registration of Filipino births in the local civil registry offices. Their core objective as to the conduct of this program is because it has been observed that some of the Filipinos had already got their national IDs but still do not have birth certificates and/or their births have not been registered in their respective local civil registry offices. Therefore, this program is to ensure that every single Filipino is being registered and provided with a birth certificate albeit the presence of the national ID with the President Duterte has stated in, in his executive order number one-six-two series of twenty-twenty-two as a sufficient proof of identity of an individual. So, being found to be beneficial, most especially to the marginalized people in the community and the poorest sector with no other questions and concerns raised, there has been a consensus to support and grant the request of the Honorable City Mayor to authorize him to sign the memorandum of agreement for the Philsees Birth Registration Assistance Project in Oroqueta City. In behalf of the chairman and the committee on social services, I recommend for the acceptance and adoption of committee report number twenty-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-seven as well as passing on second and final reading the proposed city resolution number one-one-seven dash twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, Madam. Um, the lady from Mobut, is there anyone who would like to be enlightened on, ah, the mother of hand? Kung wala, kining, ah, the chair would like to know, what's happening with this ah, government entity or, ah, some agency under contrast with this government?
Yes, under contract with the Philippine Statistics Authority.
Ah, di taga-angay ni- negotiation eh?
Yes.
Ah, what's my experience eh, tinurin nga, na ay mga, mga natunya dili ma-register, the civil register?
Ah, usually the, kana marginalized sector, the poorest sector, wala din ang dili makaristro bidaw. Uh, Mr. Presiding, that is, that is why they are conducting a mobile, mobile na registration. So naanay, nanay number of registered, uh, uh, number of registrat na ready na sa LGU, and ang igon na lang wala at doon sa kada barangay.
Yeah, that's lamentable kay, sawan, opo bigyan, niya, kung, uh, kung dili, fisika, dili mo report na birth, no? Uh, ma, kung hilog lang or, kung ano, maragwala kita? Okay, uh, thank you for the information. So, is there napay mo komentario? Uh, kung wala na, the Honorable Majority Leader is requested to proceed accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding, with the recommendation of the Vice Chair Committee on Social Services, pertaining to the MOA by and between the local government of Orocata and the Philci's Birth Registration Assistance Project in Orocata City. With no objection, I so move for adoption of committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-seven as well as the proposed city resolution number one-one-seven dash two-zero-two-two on second and final reading.
Thank you. The, eh, there is a motion that committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-seven be adapted and that the accompanying proposed resolution number one-one-seven dash twenty-twenty-two be passed on second and final reading. Is there any objection? Comment? Chair here's none, the motion is approved.
E, committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-eight, again may call in the Vice Chair Committee on Social Services, the gentlelady from Barangay Mobod.
The Honorable Lady from Mobod is recognized.
Again, thank you, Mr. Presiding and the Majority Leader, committee report number twenty-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-eight, referred to the Committee on Social Services pertaining to the letter dated twenty-seventh April twenty-twenty-two from the Honorable City Mayor Lemuel Merrick M. Acosta, requesting this august body to pass a resolution authorizing him to enter into a memorandum of understanding by and between the LGU and the Department of Social Welfare Development for the implementation of supplemental feeding program in daycare centers. The supplementary feeding program is the provision of one thousand two, one thousand two hundred seventy-five target children of at least one forty-five meal with an amount of fifteen pesos per head as allocation, composing of rice, swanian, and milk, and alternative meals for period of not less than one hundred twenty days in a year. This program has been in existence for years as the continuous pursuit of the DSWD in their mandate of providing social welfare and development programs. That is program has been their contribution to the early childhood care and development, or ECCD, program of the government. Nonetheless, since this is already a yearly program with no other questions and concerns being raised and the committee including the other entities concerned is in strong support to endeavor, there has been a consensus to grant the request of the Honorable City Mayor to authorize him to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the LGU Orocata and the Department of Social Welfare and Development. So in behalf of the Chairman and the Committee on Social Services, I recommend for the acceptance and adoption of committee report number twenty-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-eight as well as passing on second and final reading the attached proposed city resolution number one-one-eight dash twenty-twenty-two.
Is there any comment, remarks on the recommendation of the Vice Chair Committee on Social Services regarding its committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-eight including the attached proposed city resolution number one-one-eight dash twenty-twenty-two? Um... Wala eh, ko-komentario? Kini, kini, kung wala, the Chair would like to know. Uh, feeding mo goni?
Yes.
Uh, anya, LGU and the DSWD meaning national?
National funding.
DSWD. Uh, ang budget ni, na ay, counterpart ang city?
No, naano.
Ah, wala?
Yes, DSWD, solely, yes, DSWD.
Okay, thank you. So... Napay mo komentario? Oga, is there, na, Majority Leader, the?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Presiding, on the recommendation of the Vice Chair Committee on Social Services, pertaining to the MOA signed between the local government of Orocata and the DSWD, pertaining to the year-round supplemental feeding program in daycare centers. With no objection, I so move for adoption of committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-eight as well as the attached proposed city resolution number one-one-eight dash two-zero-two-two on second and final reading.
Thank you, Majority Leader. The is, uh, motion that committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-eight for the Committee on Social Services be adapted and that the proposed resolution number one-eight-eight dash twenty-twenty-two attached thereto be passed on second and final reading. Is there any objection, comment? Chair here's none, the motion is approved.
F, the committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-nine, may call in the lead, uh, committee chair, the gentleman from Tabukur.
The gentleman from Tabukur, the Honorable Joel Villalau, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President Officer and the Majority Leader. Committee report number twenty-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-nine, with the subject, sangunyang kabataan supplemental budget number one, CY twenty-twenty-two, for barangay to Yop, DC, in the total amount of two hundred sixty-two thousand, six hundred thirty-four. Uh, Mr. President Officer, uh, the subject sangunyang kabataan supplemental budget was issued by this committee and found imperative its entirety for so after section twenty of the public act two thousand four-two, subject to budgeting, accounting, and written house and regulations. And that, uh, committee, uh, presentation recommends for the acceptance and adoption of committee report number twenty-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-nine and passing on second and final reading the proposed city resolution number one-one-nine dash twenty-twenty-two entitled A Resolution Declaring Sangunyang Kabataan Supplemental Budget Number One for CY twenty-twenty-two barangay to Yop, DC, operative in its entirety, twenty-two, twenty-two.
Is there any comment, remark on the recommendation of the committee chair, Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations regarding its committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-nine and the accompanying proposed city resolution number one-one-nine dash twenty-twenty-two that it be passed on second and final reading. The Chair here's none, um, Majority Leader, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding, on the recommendation of the Committee Chair Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations, pertaining to the supplemental budget number one, barangay to Yop, with no objection, I so move for adoption of committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-nine and the attached proposed city resolution number one-one-nine dash two-zero-two-two, wherein it was found out that it is operative in its entirety, the supplemental budget number one for barangay two thousand twenty-two barangay to Yop. I so move for its approval on second and final reading.
Is there any objection, comment on the motion that committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-nine-nine be adapted and that proposed city resolution number one-one-nine dash twenty-twenty-two be passed on second and final reading? The Chair here's none, the motion is approved.
G, committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash one-zero-zero, may call in the gentleman from Tabukur.
The gentleman from Tabukur is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President Officer and the Majority Leader. Joint Committee Report number twenty-two dash zero-five dash one-zero-zero. Uh, Mr. President Officer, uh, the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations and the Committee on barangay affairs, to which was referred the subject matter for appropriate this is active action. The letter dated twenty-fifth April twenty-twenty-two from the Honorable City Mayor Lemuel Merrick M. Acosta, requesting this august body to pass a resolution authorizing him to grant extent financial assistance in the amount of six hundred thousand and entered a memorandum of agreement by and between the City Government of Orocata and the Liga ng mga barangay, this city, for expenses to be incurred for the office supplies, honoraria of the legal officials and board of directors, and for the purchase of office equipment. Mr. President Officer, the above subject matter was, uh, considered reviewed on the joint committee hearing conducted on May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two at two P M, together with the members of the joint committee and representatives from the concerned offices, uh, resulting to a positive and favorable recommendation after a thorough process and deliberation, and hereby in consensus, so respectfully recommend to pass on second and final reading. Therein attached proposed city resolution number one-two-zero dash twenty twenty-two authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Lemuel Merrick M. Acosta uh, to grant extent financial assistance to the Liga ng mga barangay, this city, in the amount of six hundred thousand pesos for expenses to be incurred for their office supplies, honoraria of the legal officials and board of directors, and for the purchase of office equipment and entered a memorandum of agreement related thereto chargeable against the appropriation for misrañas general public services, Liga ng mga barangay, added maintenance and operating expenses. Uh, Mr. President Officer, attached to the proposed, uh, city resolution, are the Liga ng mga barangay resolution number zero-one, series of twenty-twenty-two, proposed, uh, pro, uh, activity proposal approved by the City Mayor and the City Budget Commissioner, and third is the letter request from the local chief executive, and fourth is the memorandum of agreement. So, um, Mr. President Officer, in behalf of the joint committee, uh, recommends for the acceptance and adoption of committee report number twenty-two dash zero-five dash one-hundred and to pass on second and final reading the uh, proposed city resolution number one-two-zero dash two-zero-two-two. Uh, the title has, uh, read away, Mr. President Officer.
Na ay, gusto Mobodana, lari, kitoi, mati, grasyon? Uh, for barangay ko, di commit, di President Officer, morag, na ay, Ibangotana, Honorable Chairman, kani, nganong di man makadirito sumayaw o uh, allocate, kani, six hundred thousand, naanay man na sa iyang MOOE, mamaya source sa iyang funds, in other words, naanay appropriation, kani, nganong di man si makadirito, nganong gakinan na to mag, authority na to?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President Officer. So, uh, sa, balawad, Mr. President Officer, once the local chief executive, mo branche of financial assistance, so to the other, uh, ato government, other government agencies, and other local government units, kinalangid ugka ng memorandum of agreement to be executed by the part, the parties, Mr. President Officer. So as of the budget, Mr. President Officer, wala na problema, pero, o sa provision sa balawad nga, kinalangid mo, maggama ang gudupunta taang, uh, maggama ang gudugmua ang local chief executive, in behalf of the City Government, and the, uh, second party, Mr. President Officer. So as of the budget, Mr. President Officer, wala na problema, kay, it was already allocated in the in the, under the office of the City Mayor, the amount of six hundred thousand intended for the Liga ng mga barangay.
Uh, in other words, naanay, is, naanay, naanay, the, um, uh, specific, uh, allocation desa budget, nga, intended for this very purpose?
Yes, Mr. President Officer.
Magiginan lang pag yung mua?
Yes, Mr. President Officer. Kayda mua, Mr. President Officer, dito nakaisip unsa obligation sa second party, Mr. President Officer.
Mm-hmm. Uh, okay. Ay, nakatundong ko, na, at one time, si, dunay landmark kay, sino eh? Si Governor Gweng Garcia, gikwesyon eh, authority pag, pag, uh, enter into, uh, certain contract, naanay budget, ang iyang stand was that, dili na si kinalan, mga authority pa, go enter into that contract, kay, ang budget, chef, authorized here to do so. Uh, pabutok na overthrown, na, nausog na maghahaneh. Uh, but, uh, that is what I know, it was a landmark case. Wala pa, wala pa, kwan si, uh, dunay complaint against Garcia, nga, ni over, na over, uh, iyan gi, gi bypass ang sangunyang panaluwigan, pero na, uphill sa Supreme Court. Oh, anyway, um, eh, eh, uh, for what to? Ay, once we authorize the mayor, uh, mga incidental matters siguro, na, naanay, makadirito na siadirito mua na yun, o natingalin ay, which is the better thing, no? Uh, mapaspass. By the way, mamaya na practice ka, uh, pati, Mobodong panahon, nga, may streamline. So napay mo komentario? Oh, lana, Honorable Majority Leader, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding, on the recommendation of the Committee Chair with no objection, I so move for adoption of the joint committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash one-zero-zero, including the attached proposed city resolution number one-two-zero dash two-zero-two-two on second and final reading.
There is, uh, motion that the joint committee report number two-two dash zero-five dash zero-one-one-zero be adapted and that the accompanying proposed city resolution number one-two-zero dash twenty-twenty-two be passed on second and final reading. Is there any objection, comment, remark? Chair here's none, motion is approved.
I call in our business. One unfinished business, none, two business for the day. Proposed city resolution on second and final reading, item two-point-one-point-eight, proposed city resolution number one-one-six dash two-zero-two-two, may call in the gentlelady from Barangay Bolibot. lady from barangay Bolibol?
The gentle lady from Bolibol, the Honorable Josephine, uh, Josephine Mahinae is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding, Honorable Majority floor leader. Proposed city resolution number one-one-six dash twenty-twenty-two, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Limwell Merrick M. Acosta to enter into a memorandum of agreement by and between the City Government of Orqueta and the Naghiusang Lumad, na mag-uuma sa Cibukal in connection with allocated two units of decortificating fiber machines from the local government unit of Orqueta to the city NGO. Whereas the Naghiusang Lumad na mag-uuma sa Cibukal, which is duly registered, association with the Department of Labor and Employment, has been given an appropriate funds by the City Government of Orqueta with an amount of three-hundred-eight thousand for the procurement of two units spindle stripping machines. However, as per letter dated February twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, the Association through its president requested to change spindle stripping machines to decortificating fiber machines because they have found out that the latter can produce more abaca fiber in a short period of time. Thus, may result to the increase in income for abaca farmers with a favorable endorsement of the Office of the City Mayor. Whereas the August body to the Committee on Accreditation of NGOs, tasked to take further action on the matter in aid of legislation, arrived to a common stance of acceding to the request of the local chief executive upon proper consultation with the concerned stakeholders, as it will not only redound to the welfare of rural of the Cibukal abaca farmers, but will also boost and contribute to the economic growth of the city, considering the potential of abaca industry due to its high demand. In behalf of the committee, I am to pass on second and final reading the proposed city resolution number one-one-six dash twenty-twenty-two, Mr. Presiding. Thank you.
Is there any comment on the recommendation of the committee chair? As regards city resolution number one-one-six dash twenty-twenty-two? Chair, hears none, the Honorable Majority Leader is...
Thank you, Mr. Presiding, on the recommendation of the committee chair. Committee on Accreditation of NGOs and POs pertaining to the mua by and between the City Government of Orqueta and the Naghiusang Lumad na mag-uuma sa Cibukal in connection with allocated two units of decortificating fiber machines from the local government unit, the said non-government organizations. With no objection, I shall move to pass on second and final reading the proposed city resolution number one-one-six dash two-zero-two-two.
Is there any objection to the motion that city resolution number one-one-six dash twenty-twenty-two be passed on second and final reading? The Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Item two-point-one-point-B, proposed city resolution number one-two-one dash two-zero-two-two of the Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriations, may I call in the honorable gentleman from Tabuk Sur?
The gentleman on the book sur is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer and Majority floor leader. The proposed city resolution number one-two-one dash twenty-twenty-two, entitled authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Limwell Merrick M. Acosta to grant extent financial assistance to the saguyang kabatan of barangay San Disintialto de City in the amount of ten thousand pesos for expenses to be incurred for their, for their Liga inter-prol activities and to enter into memorandum of agreement related thereto chargeable against appropriation for subsidy to other NGOs under the Office of the City Mayor. This initiative action, Mr. Presiding, is an action taken in relation to the later dated May sixteen, twenty-twenty-two, from the Honorable City Mayor requesting authority to grant extent financial assistance to saguyang kabatan of San Disintialto in the amount of ten thousand for their Liga inter-prol activities. Attached to the proposed resolution, Mr. Presiding Officer, our Eskay resolution number zero-four dash a series of twenty-twenty-two, and activity, uh, activity proposal, Mr. Presiding Officer, since this proposed city resolution number one-two-one dash twenty-twenty-two is presented for second and final reading, uh, as a proponent, Mr. Presiding Officer, I read for any, uh, interpretation or clarification, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Your attention is called that you want to make some comment, remarks, clarifications, questions, or enter into any with the gentleman on the book sur? I, it is observed that nobody is interested to, you will review, enter into some kind of dialogue or argument. Honorable Akla.
In behalf, Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the committee, I move to pass on second and final reading the proposed city resolution number one-two-one dash twenty-two, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Is there any comment, remarks on the recommendation of the Honorable Julian B. Akla regarding city resolution number, proposed city resolution number one-two-one dash twenty-twenty-two? Chair hears none, Majority floor leader, please proceed accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding, on the recommendation of the committee chair, Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriations, with no objection and no amendment as well. I shall move to pass on second and final reading the proposed city resolution number one-two-one dash two-zero-two-two.
There is a motion for, uh, that proposed city resolution number one-two-one dash twenty-twenty-two be passed on second and final reading. Is there any comment, objection? Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Item two-point-one-point-C, the proposed city resolution number one-two-two dash two-zero-two-two has been consummated already since the invited, the guest, no, woman, no, Miss Shaira. Would I ask permission if we will still proceed?
Yes, 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 Mr. President.
They have already awarded the, this...
Uh, which need to pass?
Ah, resolution, okay.
May I request the, the Honorable gentleman from barangay Dulipos, bahal?
Thank you, uh, Majority floor leader. Proposed city resolution number one-two-two dash twenty-twenty-two, entitled resolution giving recognition, commendation, and reward to Miss Shaira Ho P. Rivera, resident of barangay Pines, Orqueta City, for bagging the bronze medal in the women's tennis doubles during the thirty-first Sea Games in Hanoi, Vietnam, thereby giving pride and honor to the city subject to all laws and ordinance sets and existing legal rules and regulations. This is in line with the letter dated, in response to the letter dated May sixteen, twenty-two, from the Honorable City Mayor Limwell Merrick M. Acosta, asking this August body for an appropriate recognition and reward to Miss Shaira Ho P. Rivera. Let me read some of the lower assets. Whereas the Southeast Asian Games is a menial multi-sport event involving athletes from eleven countries of Southeast Asia, not only as a sporting event, but to promote cooperation, understanding, and improve relations between the among the countries in the region. Whereas Miss Rivera's admirable quest to give glory and honor to the Philippines and to the city of Orqueta by her acts of discipline and sacrifice to bag the bronze medal during the thirty-first Sea Games in Hanoi, Vietnam, is deserving of commendation, praise, and recognition. Whereas the city ordinance number eight-two-three dash two thousand nineteen, entitled granting cash incentive to Orqueta City-based athletes and coaches, caperons, trainers, and for such other purposes, basically fits for the recognition and award in which Miss Shaira Ho P. Rivera is a qualified champion thereof. So in line with the appearance of Miss Shaira Rivera a while ago, if there would be no question and recommendation, I would like to pass this resolution on second and final reading.
Is there anyone who would like to make comment, remarks on the recommendation of the Honorable Hendrix Fon Gonzaga as author of proposed city resolution number one-two-two dash twenty-twenty-two? Kung wala, na lay ipangotana, Presiding Officer?
Yes, Mr. Presiding.
Kining imong resolution, nagmension magunig reward.
Yes.
Uh, unsang presay reward man mahimo na't ini?
There is a cash incentive to be given by the LGU under the mayor's office, Mr. Presiding.
Uh, ulo na't nan, uh, LGO ang, kesa may modispo na, mayor?
The mayor's office, Mr. Presiding.
Um, na, um, man magmension of ma-mayoring nipita imong resolution do, doa may? Uh, tamal na'ny dwe, dilit na kahatag, kasi incentive, si mayor di kahatag, niya walkway ma.
Uh, Mr. Presiding, as I discussed with Miss Shaira a while ago, we already talked with, since this is already an ordinance, Mr. Presiding, uh, I think there is no need to, to pass a resolution, but, uh, in, uh, for, uh, it could be given immediately to Miss Shaira, and that would be on June twelve.
Uh, sa tapawak, kinalanan na, nga maghimotang resolution, nga tagaabkinabuhi ang ordinance ang maghatag o kasintip?
I believe, Mr. Presiding, because, uh, previously, there were already athletes who were given, uh, a cash incentive without a, uh, resolution.
Uh, okay. So, napay mo, komensaryo? Um, say mong dun-dun, pilag na ang kasintip?
As I said, the ordinance, Mr. Presiding, uh, bronze, uh, bronze medal is equivalent to a third place, so it is, the cash incentive is ten thousand pesos.
From the LGU?
From the LGU.
Uh, okay, very good. So, naanay budget na, ano na'y sir, is that, is that, um, ongoing budget, satong budget for the year twenty-twenty-two?
Yes, Mr. Presiding Officer. Uh, the City Mayor has allocated five-hundred thousand for the cash incentive, Mr. Presiding Officer, annually.
Auly, no, wapil sa ining, sport, (laugh) okay, dahka kaisulaman sa information. I think our administration should be commended for this, uh, looking for, uh, was is consistent with the national program, nga mahatag god of cash award, no? Uh, watak kapagotana ganina, ni, di si pilag, pilag po iyang award, iyang cash award, no? Uh, di, di, yes, di gaan to house na't, oh, dako dako, to'na, dawa. So that's a good incentive, and that will inspire our young people, uh, to make things of this kind happen to them. So, um, ugula na, Majority floor leader, please proceed accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding, on the recommendation of committee chair pertaining to the giving of recognition, commendation, and reward to Miss Shaira Ho P. Rivera, a resident of barangay Pines, Orqueta City, for bagging the bronze medal in women's tennis doubles during the thirty-first Sea Games in Hanoi, Vietnam. With no objection, I shall move to pass on second and final reading the proposed city resolution number one-two-two dash two-zero-two-two.
There is, thank you, Majority floor leader, there is a motion that proposed city resolution number one-two-two dash twenty-twenty-two, as described, be passed on second and final reading. Is there any objection, comment? Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Proposed city ordinance, none. Item two-point-two for review, none. Item two-point-three, letter dated twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-two, from the Honorable City Mayor Limwell Merrick M. Acosta, requesting this August body to pass a resolution authorizing him to grant extent financial assistance in the amount of twenty thousand pesos and enter into a memorandum of agreement by and between the City Government of Orqueta and the barangay government of Kanobai, this city. Respectfully recommend to refer item two-point-three to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations.
Item two-point-three is referred to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations.
Item two-point-four, dated, letter dated May twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two, from Mr. Richard I Narano, a resident of Boroxinko, Apurlangkangan, DCP, and holder of franchise number zero-seven-seven-six, manifesting his intent to surrender self-franchise based on the reasons stated in his letter, may respectfully refer item two-point-four to the Committee on Transportation.
Item two-point-four is so referred accordingly.
Item two-point-five, first endorsement, dated twenty-seven, May twenty-twenty-two, from the office of the City Mayor by Executive Assistant Ford Giancarlo P. Chavez, forwarding to this August body, the letter dated twenty-five, May twenty-twenty-two, from City Treasurer Roelte Visitation, requesting to amend SP resolution number two-zero-two-one, the zero-five dash two-one, dated May thirty-one, twenty-twenty-one, by changing the date of execution of the deed of donation with acceptance entered into by and between the City Government of Orqueta and Mr. Remolu Gyalon, Mrs. Eileen Gyalon. Respectfully recommend item two-point-five to the Committee on Land Use and Zoning.
Item two-point-five is referred to the Committee on Land Use and Zoning.
Item two-point-six, letter dated twenty-six, May twenty-twenty-two, by City Administrator Manuel Yuneri, for, and in the absence of the City Mayor, requesting this August body to pass a resolution authorizing the local chief executive to grant extent financial assistance in the amount of ten thousand pesos, and enter into a memorandum of agreement by and between the City Government of Orqueta and barangay Talik, Orqueta City Eskay. Respectfully recommend item two-point-six, refer likewise rather to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations.
Item two-point-six is referred to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations.
Item two-point-seven for information, A, first endorsement, dated seventeen, May twenty-twenty-two, from the office of the City Mayor by Executive Assistant Ford Nilo Gibati on Capifarnes, this August body of the DILG made it sixteen, May twenty-twenty-two on subject, disciplination of IATF resolution number one-six-seven, the D series of twenty-twenty-two. This pertains to the encouragement of the Department of Education for the vaccination of our schoolchildren.
Okay, and noted?
B, executive order number zero-two-three dash two-zero-two-two, dated May twenty-four, twenty-twenty-two, from the office of City Mayor, an order authorizing the temporary road closure of a portion of Porokono, Marapau Street, barangay Lower Lamak, this city, on twenty-eighth, May twenty-twenty-two, for information.
Noted?
C, memorandum circular number 003-022 dated 23 May 2022, from the Honorable City Mayor Lemuel Merrick M. Acosta, address all chiefs of office, local, national structures, this city, informing of the assumption of the raising and lowering of the Philippine flag in appropriate ceremonies every first working day of the week at 7:45 PM and every last working day of the week at 4:45 PM effective 06 June 2022 attached is the schedule, the subject for information.
Braga limsa na todo, no? That was COVID, no?
COVID.
Uh, okay, they noted?
D, first endorsement dated 23 May 2022, from the Honorable City Mayor Lemuel Merrick M. Acosta forwarding this august body the memorandum circular number 2022-063 dated 19 May 2022, signed by Mr. Eduardo M. Anya, DILG Secretariat on subject National Assembly of the Philippine Councilverse League.
Masaan to, no?
This is, uh, is dated, uh, June 21 to 23 at Metro Manila.
Notum, no?
For the, specifically for the graduating counselors.
Masaan mo, magatum, no? Di ba nai, nai registration, no?
Yes.
Na, napapalit ba di, no? Oo na, apati, out, asking.
The graduating counselor, I think, is necessary for them to receive the award from the PCL, Mr. Presiding.
Uh, okay, okay. So Dili, nima kompleksa sa gil fixne mayor sa all taking sa June 28? Magkabalik na?
This is from June 21 to 23.
Okay.
May proceed, Mr. Presiding. E, first endorsement dated 24 May 2022, from the office of the city mayor by Executive Assistant for Nilo G. Batian, forwarding this august body the DILG memorandum circular number 2022-061 dated 19 May 2022 on subject national movement of young ladies legislators and term general meeting and awarding of MYL honors. I think it's the same with the D, letter D, Mr. Presiding. I think the date is being amended. Previously, this item E is dated 16 to 17, if I'm not mistaken.
Kisa may na apel, neng yang ladies, dito? Huh? Kisa na apel, neng? Si Julian Anlaw, right, na apel, neng? How did he? Noted, noted?
F, first endorsement dated
Everybody know?
F, first endorsement dated 23 May 2022, from the Honorable City Mayor Lemuel Merrick M. Acosta, forwarding this august body the DILG memorandum circular number 2022-060 dated 8th May 2022 on subject amending DILG memorandum circular number 2014-119 titled 'Directing Cities Capel Towns to Require installation of Closed-Circuit Televisions' for certain disestablishment in accordance with Section 16, General Welfare Close of Republic Act Number 7160 to support the maintenance of peace and order and public safety. For the information, if you value the city is compliant with this under city ordinance number 570-2014, for information.
Noted, noted?
G, DPWH, Miss Ames Occidental, first district engineering ops monthly status report on infrastructure projects implemented in the city of Orqueta as of May 2022.
You're noted with, uh, uh with a suggestion to the honorable soldier, Gomeninda? Okay, mora, wakatanan, day bergenru, mora, man? Huh? Mor, mor, um, mora, mengutahating, eh, tana, kay, mora, man? Budget bata, mulapus, mora, mili, yeah, man, kay, mora, man, guy, kadadatulag, mora, gamay, man, guy, guy.
H, office of the city, he will register brief report for the month of April 2022 with net income of 25,700 pesos, for information.
Noted, memorandum?
I, memorandum order number 170-2022 dated 27 May 2022, from the office of the city mayor, address, among others, to this to the city officials enjoying the attend and participate in the flag raising ceremony and short program at the city plaza on June 12, 2022 at 6:45 in the morning. For information, that's all, Mr. Presiding.
You're noted? Ah, sa Independence Day, neng? Independence Day, June 12, 2022. Okay, thank you, Major Proler, and so we are now in councilor's time by mayor's time. Um Any gentleman or lady who would like to uh, discuss something? Wala na, uh? Wala na, Santa Cruz? Santa Cruzan, mora, kini balik-balik, kene, kene, Santa Cruzan, da? Santa Cruz? Uh, nagu-raso sila magigita, kunsi-halpon? Uh, pora, raso, magigita, man? Kining, bahin sagat trip to Dahilayan, kita man, tana? Magat, neng?
With Chilean, actually, a budget.
Uh, yu, du, nyan?
Yes, Miss Shaira, nyan.
So, tana, magsihad, unguan?
Yes.
Uh, very good.
We have the briefers provided to you.
Noted?
Na.
Noted? Kini? Is everybody given a brief of the trip to uh, the Dahilayan, Manolo Potix?
Huh?
Tigan, tama, tama?
Yes, Mr. Presiding, from the trip trip itinerary.
Now, question, neng? Kilarib, ketuli, um, question, bahin sa trip itinerary for Estegad activity? Wala na?
From day one.
Everything is clear? Um
Then the program for the tribute and disvida party for the honorable vice mayor and honorable Ilum.
Come on, eh? Uh, sakwanay, ditulis dahila
Dahilayan.
Dahilayan?
Oo. And then, we have another program to be held at the VIP Hotel as our God lecture venue. This is only an internal arrangement because we are supposed to do the lecture or to have the lecture in Dahilayan. But, our resource speaker, uh, for the information of the honorable body, uh, we have tapped a very prominent and very kind of rare resource speaker for our God, none other than the Chief of God, a Chief God Specialist from the Philippine Commission and Women of Northern Mindanao. She is the field officer of Northern Mindanao of the Philippine Commission and Women.
Sing, lana, dyan?
Anthony Christine M. Lazzarito Kalingen.
Kalinyo?
Kalingen.
Oh, kali, ah, Kalingen.
Oo, dyan. Uh, lisod, magid kaayo, eh, hang time, dili, magid siya makaagto sa Dahilayan kay naamang good food sila, training seminar nga mo end up anang 5 PM, anang adlaw, so since the one proposing nga, our lecture will be done at the venue in VIP. So, nagrequest siya, mai-expend na lang ang Pines lap nila in this 5 PM. I up to, mo extend obi laka hours para lang gid malekturan ta dito, then our dinner will be there already dinapod. We will be served with a buffet style na dinner, then di kwenta lang ang da dulo na to. Kay ingon, ani, magid ni kay mora, dili, tingali
Asam, eh?
Sa VIP in kagayan. Second night na na isya kong inig uli na na to padulong. Kay mo, ano, magid ta mo mag-stay, uh, mag-overnight stay, magid ta ok kagayan kay apiki namang gid pag uli na to pag ambogigan, ubukid nun.
Overnight as bukid nun?
Ma-overnight pag isa kagabi eh, then ang ato ang first night ato dito sa bukid nun sa Dahilayan nga disvida na isya paranino, mora, tribute.
Sa Dahilayan, sa mora, sa tamo, sibat ito?
Na, ader isa itinerary as in blit time, raban ato, dirisa town center is 1 PM. O, EM, 1 EM o karomir, uh, kibali Thursday or Mercurius na sa gabi eh, atong itar, ana kay mag-aapas man kuno sa bars, kay lisod man kay og magpa-uto-uto tag agto kay di namantakalinya, maulahi namantakayo.
Dili taga, huh? Ah, dili tama ka sabot ilan, taga, ang tag priority dito?
Muhangyo siguro, magin
Ah, right?
Kinsa kailay koneksyon, nito?
Kiri mo, eh, gusindit, yun? Kay, um, um, VIP nga priority, opa, private kesakinan, ou, istiglo, rawyo? So, ma-priority ma, ambot ato nga, maliñatas, huh, ang uvan maliñan at least a primerong bars nga mulangga ma-kalgatan, kanan, eh, sa buton? Kinsabay, isog na maging sabot ini dito. Kay, under kontak, magunang, kanang, pagpahiruna sa mga sakiran dyan sa bar dili namang pipihi and, uh, mora, private firm hangga, huh? Yes.
Si Ingrati, vice president, maasakapin, ay, po, kira iko, sa, talagang, kiri di, may, butas, talagang, sir.
At, okay lang lagi na kung priority, lagi, sa priority, pero, kining, kining, bilang bagasakinan na to?
Na, 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 na po, next page, nayro assignment, di na po i-behikel assignment, behikel as arrangement. Atong behikel, gikan de reso, Orqueta for
Ah, opa?
Oh, kanang ka po, sa mga kunsi, eh, na ikang dock in Anoria, magdala man daw siya personal dyan ang kanang para sa mga kunsi hal, nga mga kunsi hal po ikarga, na na di, mga ngalan, kinsa tana, ang musakay then akad tong, sing alan, ano sa kiana namang gin? Coastel, ma-ute para namo nga sta, may bo ramang podmi dito.
So, opa, tana?
Opat tana, from Orqueta to Kagayan, then from Kagayan to Dahilayan, mahimo na putang lima kasakinan. Unong?
Au, way, krima dito, ah, to, bars magod, uwi, to, bars, na, way?
Opat ra kom, opa.
Kay, kinalan na, bi, mga sayo dito, liña na dili maapel sa priority?
Kita diba? Tapos, tapos, eh?
Uh, okay, I'll say to go. Napaylai, muntada bahin sa biyahi na to? Um Ugula na, so ay, sa closing prayer. General I, I ask is requested to do the closing prayer. Please start closing prayer. Our Father God in heaven, we thank you for the success of our session today. Thank you for the wisdom and guidance. Father, we pray that you will help us to function well in our respective responsibilities. We pray for everything that we have discussed will be implemented well so it will help our constituents. We ask you dear Father, that the Holy Spirit will enlighten us so we become effective public servants to serve the people and become an agent of peace. Keep us all safe as we continue our individual activities today and protect us from any possible harm and danger. May the love of Christ continue to abound in us, dismissed as we die, blessed. In the loving name of Jesus, we pray, amen. Amen. Without objection the session is adjourned.